All rise please. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the last meeting of the board supervisors of Doylestown Township. For this year, we had a very good year and we're very proud of our accomplishments. Before the start of this meeting, we met in executive session. We discussed some personnel matters and we approved what's called the Schedule H for our budget, which we will vote on today. And that's pretty much it. That's public information. I don't know if we have to go into any detail at this time, but that's what we were working on before we started. Next, we have a presentation on the 2019 Turk Road feasibility studies. Chris Stanford here. Are you going to do it?
I'll introduce.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Calso.
Good evening. We're here tonight to ask for your approval of the Turk Road feasibility study, the bike and hike study that we've been working on over the past year plus. It's been, and I think some of the members that have attended the meetings with us, it's been perhaps our most challenging area to work in in the township. But at the same time, I think it's been our most successful effort in working with residents to come up with solutions and options for those challenges. We had two great meetings with the entirety of the neighborhoods. I think we invited over 200 people, quite a few people. And then we've had people attending every single meeting from the neighborhoods of the bike and hike committee. So it's been great for us. I'm real happy with the way that came off. And Chris is going to give you just a short summary. Chris Stanford from Baker International, who's been our consultant for almost 20 years now, I think.
Yes, he has.
Yes. He's going to give you a short summary.
Did you hear that? Short.
Heard it three times from Stephanie. Short, short, short.
We've read it. We're up to speed.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening. As you know, this was a study that we collaborated with Doylestown Borough on. We were fortunate to get a grant to do some planning work on the southeast portion of the township, so we're just going to sort of hit some of the highlights tonight. Next slide, please. This is a section of the bike and hike map that covers basically the Turk Road area, Cherry Lane and Pebble Hill area of the township near the Country Club. And the study basically works in this area, looking to improve connections to the borough. Next slide. Just to focus in, we looked at a lot of different, three or four different areas, just to focus the study on the things the residents were really concerned about. Looking at Turk Road, Cherry, Pebble Hill, we looked at East Road as well as a portion of Eastern Road as well. This is the overall plan that we came up with, a lot of different improvements along the whole project area that we're proposing to incorporate into the overall bike and hike map. Next, please. Again, trying to connect all these areas to the cultural district and Doylestown Borough itself. Next. Pebble Hill has been on our radar for 20-plus years, so that was a main result that came out of the study, we heard that loud and clear from the residents. Next, please. And we also discovered a lot of connections on the east and west sides of the project area that really look like they have a lot of potential for future bike and hike connections as well. Next, please. So I'm just going to sort of show you some of the renderings that came up and some of the ideas and concepts that were recommended by the committee and the residents. As you know, in the borough near the cultural district, the roadway is narrow. There's curb extension, there's on-street parking, pedestrian-scale lighting, improved intersections. We'd like to include, continue all those improvements out along Pebble Hill and Green Street towards the Country Club, towards the township, really to create that traffic calming that we want to see and to create the bike and hike opportunities in that area. Next slide. But we do have a lot of challenges on Pebble Hill Road. The physical constraints are there. As you know, the roadway is sort of depressed, there's steep side slopes, there's at least two bridges that we have to deal with. But we're hoping, you know, we're looking at different options on either side of the road, potentially using some retaining walls to potentially fit in bike and hike path in the future on some of these projects. Next slide. The other area that we wanted to look at and we heard from the residents was to incorporate some maybe lower-cost improvements on some of the low-volume residential streets. So maybe we're looking at just signing and pavement markings, maybe looking at some asphalt sidewalks adjacent to the roadway to connect folks to the larger bike and hike network. Next, please. So we're basically finishing up the study now. We're hoping to move into a grant-writing phase next year. There's a number of grants that might be, fit well with some of the projects that we are recommending for this study. We've had a good track record of winning grants, so we're hoping to move into engineering and construction and maybe in '21 through '23. So, next slide. So really, we're here to just ask that we get your endorsement of the plan and that we add it to the overall bike and hike paths network and the overall plan so we can use it as a formal planning tool in the future. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer your questions, everyone.
Very good. I'm sorry.
No, there's, I did have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One was on, along Tabor, on 6/11, the path was on the Tabor side and had it crossing over up at the ramp. Why wouldn't it cross at the traffic light before the ramp?
We're going to try to make that interface with the new traffic light that's being installed as part of the Wawa development in the borough.
Ah, okay.
So that's, so that path on Eastern Road has a lot of potential since we have Tabor coming in for land development. We also have Wawa that's coming in there. They're doing that intersection as well as they're contributing to some design work towards the barrier across the bridge there.
Okay.
So that was the thought there.
Yeah. And in your legends, on some of the slides, the dotted line is proposed and others is existing. Could we make it consistent on how you go through this?
Absolutely, we'll get that cleaned up, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Any visitors for public comment tonight? Okay. Hearing none. Announcements. We're going to be closed on Christmas Day. And we're going to be closed on January 1st as well. So our next meeting is, well, and we're going to be closed on January 20th for Martin Luther's King, next, Martin Luther King's Day. Our next regular scheduled meeting, or reorganization meeting, is January 6, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. Auditors are reorganizing on January 7th at 4:30. Concerned citizens from Rogers Road and vicinity will be meeting in the community meeting room on January 7th, 2020, if anybody's familiar with the Gregorian calendar, that's Russian Christmas. And that's at 7:00 p.m. The next regularly scheduled meeting of this board is January 21st at 7:00 p.m. Christmas tree drop-off, and it irritates the heck out of me every time I see this before Christmas, but the drop-off for your Christmas tree is at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park anytime during December and January. Gift-giving ideas, in case you haven't gone shopping yet, we have movie tickets and ski tickets, bicentennial gifts and Mercer tiles, park and recreation gift certificates for programs, park benches, mural prints, Kids Castle bricks and Dogs Around Doylestown posters, which are fabulous posters, and you can get a brick at the service memorial. And that's it for the first part of the announcements. Next, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes for the December 3 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review them, especially you, Mr. Colallo?
Yes, he has, thank you.
Okay. I don't get to say that again.
Yeah. I know, it breaks your heart.
Not going to start yet, okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any other, any comments, questions, none? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
They are approves. All right, now we're off to a really running start here. Next item on the agenda, correspondences from the solicitor. Anything from you? No? From reports from the solicitor?
Well, nothing at the moment, but later in the agenda I may have comments.
Chief?
Nothing to report, but I just would like to thank Mr. Colallo and Mr. Snyder for working with you over the last several years. It's been a pleasure. Learned a lot from you and wish you luck in the future.
Thanks, chief. I appreciate that.
Township engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Director of operations?
Not at this time.
Manager?
Nothing at this time.
Jen?
Just a few reports. We had our telecommunications advisory board meeting. There we discussed the acoustics in the room, the use of microphones, some new videos they're shooting for our television station, including a new resident video that looks to be pretty phenomenal. I can't wait for that to roll out, in addition to our new website that Andrea has been working on. Also, the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Council, we met and discussed an event called 10 Days of Trees, where there's going to be a celebration of trees in the township coming up in the spring. There's going to be poetry readings, there's going to be movies, there's going to be lectures, there's going to be nature walks. It's going to be wonderful, so keep an eye out for that. They're also planning invasive species workshops. They've held them in the past, cleaning up things like burning bush and other invasive species in the park and educating the community on what they can clean up on their own property. And also, Doylestown Township's own Owen Neal, who did his Eagle Scout project in our Central Park, he built a pollinator palace, which is like an insect hotel for pollinators. He's going to be advanced to his Eagle Scout, to become an Eagle Scout, coming up, and I would like to congratulate him on that. He came in to announce that at that meeting. For the Parks and Rec Committee, we took a tour of Lower Providence's community center. Currently, we're looking at considering a community center on our property, and so the Park and Rec Department, as well as our staff, has worked very hard to look at other areas and what they've done and what they've done well and what they hadn't done that well. We also had a joint meeting with Ways and Means to develop the finances for the community centers so that we can all make wonderful decisions. And that's all I have to report.
Jen?
Yeah, a couple of things. Wanted to talk a little bit about one of your announcements, and that was with the traffic in the meeting with the people on Rogers. What was, to me, what was significant about this was, we had a couple of residents that got extremely engaged. They went to the PennDOT website, they got the handbook on how to do traffic calming, and they read it, and they understood it. They've been coming to the traffic committee for some time and trying to say, what can we do on Rogers? And I think, more out of frustration, they kept pressing the other night, and I'd like to thank the chief for taking the initiative to say, well, let's do this. And that's what spurred the meeting in January with a small group to look at different things they could do and what are they really looking for. What comes out of that will probably be a larger survey, but I guess the main thing is if you have an issue, get engaged, get informed, and these residents, they really understood what that policy meant. So I would encourage everybody to do similarly what they have done. The next one is the Ways and Means, and building upon what Jen was saying about the Park and Rec Community Center, the Ways and Means and the Park and Rec Group expect to come to the board in January and look for some guidance on what the next step is. So they've done an excellent job on pulling all the data together. It took some time, but I think you'll be surprised on the level of detail that they've gone to. So expect that for the new board in January. Also, this is my last meeting. I didn't think I'd do this.
Remember the over and under?
Yep. Excuse me. It's hard to believe that six years have passed. It's been filled, it's been filled with significant accomplishments and challenges, and I'm very proud of what we, the township staff, the police staff, the respective committees, and the board has done. One of the first things I did as a supervisor was to meet with the respective department heads, learn what they do, how they do it, and the challenges they face. This gave me an appreciation for day-to-day issues and the challenges they face. It was from those meetings I developed a strategy for the types of projects that I thought the township should work on. I did not share this strategy with anyone, as I knew I first had to earn the respect of my fellow supervisors, the staff, and the committee members. Over time, we would bring ideas forward as resources, and timing was appropriate, and we pursued them. The first priority was the budgeting process. I'm a firm believer, one must follow the money and fully understand where the tax dollars go. With five supervisor-budget meetings, multiple reviews with department heads, over 650 line items critiqued, documented capital request, a five-year budget plan and tax plan demonstrates the budgeting model far exceeds what was done before, and illustrates the township is in control. While the budget process is a key step, the township also had several other significant The Pebble Ridge, Woodbridge Sewer Project is being installed as we speak, after many years of debate. The Furlong Water Project has been completed after many years of debate. We now have a new administration and police facility that also had many years of debate. This project, after we had engineered estimates developed, was on budget and only incurred weather-related delays. This building will serve the township needs for the next 50 years and provide a safe environment for residents and the township staff and the police staff. Significant detailed committee work has been accomplished on the underfunded pension issue. This work started with a year-long subcommittee detailed analysis, the formation of a new pension advisory committee, the implementation of numerous quick hits, and an action plans that defines the next steps. An asset management system has been approved and is being implemented. This will transform how the township will manage the roads program, stormwater management reporting, and account for other township assets. It is also planned to include the water authority inventory, and code assets will be migrated as well. It will be one of the central systems that will drive operational efficiencies in future While there have been several significant tangible projects, probably a bigger achievement has been more intangible. From early, from early on, my fellow supervisors would kid me about my constant critique about data and processes.
Data.
Data, 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 data. I have seen an organization that has dramatically shifted to making decisions based on data, not on intuition. I have seen an organization accept there needs to be sound processes to achieve sustainability supported through detailed training. These activities are critical steps required for an organization to develop into one that not only excels in operational tasks, but can evolve into an organization that can adapt to future needs and operate efficiently. So back to my strategy. There were two areas we did not get developed as much as I hoped. While actions have been taken, there's still work to do, and the two areas are resident engagement and resource capacity management. For resource capacity management, there have been preliminary discussions. This is important to pursue since it has a direct impact on capital planning and being able to deliver on project commitments. On resident engagement, we have had several discussions. Work is being done on a new township website, potential migration to a different resident communication tool, and developing township branding. So I would encourage the board to continue support for these two efforts, as they are critical to future growth and success. I want to thank the township staff, the police staff, the committee members, and this board for the past six successful years. We encouraged open debate because it was focused on ideas and data, never to challenge each other personally. We all strove for the success of the township, never for the promotion of individual pursuits. One thing that's allowed us to work so well as a board was because of our diversity. We have diverse experiences, which led to diverse ideas. While we are different, we have complemented and supported each other because we respected and appreciated each other's values. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I wish Nancy and Dan much success.
Here, here. Top that, Rick Colallo.
Well...
Rick's over here taking notes. He's ready.
Wish I had aired something, but Ken, you earned our respect immediately, so it wasn't hard for us. And rest assured that your hard work will produce long-term results, and I'm proud to say that I was a member of your team with you. That's all I have.
Brian?
Well, I just want to say first that it has been an honor and a privilege to serve with both Ken and Rick. Rick and I joined the board together eight years ago, Ken six years ago, and there are no two individuals that put more time and effort into this township. They went to meetings they didn't have to go to. They got involved in initiatives they didn't need to be a part of. And the drive and what they have taught me is invaluable. Not only will I sorely miss both of you, but it is a tremendous loss to the township as a whole. And I think, Rick, you said it, like, the work that you both have put in over the last several years will continue long after you're sitting behind this dais. So thank you all, both of you, and I'm going to miss you both so much.
Thanks.
Well, I'm going to reserve my comments for later about these two, but I have three happy and, you know, heartwarming events to report, all of which happened within the last hour. I attended the grand unveiling of the Woodall Center for Heart and Vascular Care at Doylestown Health Hospital. It was a fabulous event, and Ken was there with his wife, Cecile, because they are major donors, so it was so great to see them. And I have to tell you that the township got recognized for its work, and they, Jim Brexler actually said, "We are in Doylestown Township." It's so nice when somebody says that besides me, to say, "We're situated in Doylestown Township, and everything that we have done, we have done with the assistance and the support of Doylestown Township Administration." So we got a great big thank you on that. The second thing that happened, because I went right from that almost ribbon-cutting because I couldn't make it, couldn't stay, to a gender reveal, so Daniel's son is having a boy. So, and then, the third thing that just happened is that Ryan Mannion gave me a copy of her book, The Knock at the Door: Three Gold Star Families Bonded by Grief and Purpose. Thank you. And everyone else will get a copy too, and she'll sign it. I don't know how much it costs, though. $28, but she'll sign it for you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Okay. Moving on for, let's see, unfinished business, none, okay, new business. Our final budget, the 2020 final budget. Schedule H, we talked about before, it's part of the final budget. Everyone's had a chance to fully review and, you know, contemplate and understand the budget. Does anyone out there have any questions concerning our budget going forward in 2020? Any members of the board have any further comments?
Nope.
Will entertain a motion to approve the 2020 budget.
Move to approve the 2020 budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is to approve, so you just approved the budget, and now we have to approve the tax increase. The news, the setting of the mileage rate for 2020, you've all been provided that in great detail. Is there a motion to approve fixing the tax rate under Resolution 2178?
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Okay.
Just on page two, it's just a technical. On page two, under the ambulance and rescue squad.
Okay.
It looks like the five dropped off the end of, under cents of each $100 of assessed valuation, so it didn't foot...
An accountant would notice.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for that, with that correction, is there a motion to approve the Resolution 2178? You ready to do it?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item is proposed well ordinance. We discussed this quite a bit at the last meeting, and we have a draft ordinance for advertisement, right? That's all we have.
There'd be two things. One, I think the board is being asked if you want to proceed to advertise. Number two, I think Stephanie had a good idea that we will send a copy of this ordinance to the Board of Realtors so that we can get some comments in before you take final action, because obviously they may have some interest in the outcome, number one. Number two, they may have some ideas you may want to consider. So I think at this point, we're only requesting the board authorize its advertisement for your regular meeting in latter part of January.
Okay. I just have one question before we do this. At the bottom of the first page, I just want to make sure that I understand it. Transfers between a father and son would not be a tax under a tax law.
Any transfer that does not require the payment of a transfer tax is exempt.
Right. So if a father transfers a stinky well to a son, they have no obligation to test that one?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone understands.
We assume then that it's kind of, they know what they're getting.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of this, whatever this is called?
Wellworts.
Wellwater.
I'll make a motion.
I have a bit of clarification that I was looking for. When it comes to the requirement, it says, "If the water testing exceeds certain federal and state Safe Drinking Water Act standards specified below, PFOS isn't recognized yet as a, with a maximum amount on state or federal Safe Drinking Water Acts." So how would we address that?
I'm going to ask Keith for the answer to that question.
There's the health advisory, so we can use the...
Use the health advisory?
Yeah.
Keith Haas, the executive director of DTMA. We would go by the, it's the health advisory level of 70 parts per trillion is now the kind of MCL, unenforced MCL.
So as the ordinance is written, would that be covered under that, the advisory? Or would it only be, I'm sorry if I'm not looking at the right person?
My reaction is we should add that as a criteria to be met.
Okay.
We'll add that before I advertise.
Yeah, we can add a health advisory level in there, sure.
Another concern that I had was, a lot of states have lowered their standards from what the EPA requires. EPA sets 70 parts per trillion. There are states that are as low as four, I believe. So if there's a conflict between what the federal and state maximums are, which one would...
They would have to meet the most stringent standards.
Okay.
Because it applies to both, as you look, it says "and," so that even though you might meet one standard, if you don't meet the other, you still have to proceed to remediate the problem.
Okay.
What was, what was your concern about that? I'm missing that.
Oh, the concern was, I just wanted to make sure that the ordinance was clear as to what the... as to what the standards are in order to trigger somebody to have to pay to have either hook up to public or to have remediation. It would be nice to have it clear.
And, and the standard is the 71?
Is it 70 parts per trillion?
Currently, it's, there's a health advisory level of 70 parts per trillion.
But the state is currently looking at, at having their own standard, like many states have. So, I'm concerned once, if this ordinance were to pass, that there would be some conflicting information, and I would like to know which one would stand.
Stricter standard would apply.
Okay. In addition, under violations and penalties, it states a $1,000 fine for failing to comply with the testing requirement. We have a $1,000 fine for testing, but also the deed can't be transferred. So, is there, is there a reason why we'd want to have both a financial penalty as well as not being able to transfer the deed?
If somebody pays the fine, or it's, it's done. You can't require, they can keep going on and on where there's a real consequence to not doing it because we won't register their deed.
Right. The registering the deed is really what's.
I think we just added that as additional.
Incentive?
Incentive.
Okay. And it's a standard, Jeff, throughout our codebook, too.
I took it from your standard code numbers, yes.
It also said under Section 170.40 that it states that, that we can construct the connection to a public water system if they don't test. Is that really, I mean, I would like to consider that as far as maybe a possible change. I understand if they test and fail.
It's optional to the township or the authority, but I'm, that was basically, I think, Keith should give.
Yeah, I think that would be a real extreme case if we knew that either they were ignoring the requirement just to test, or if we know they're drinking water that's basically poison, I think, to, to basically enforce it that way. But I, I don't envision going on somebody's property and mandating that they, you know, immediately switch to a home treatment unit or, or connection.
There's also on page three, line two, there's a misspelling that just needs to be corrected on the second line.
The top?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yes. Thank you.
Got it.
Since we're wordsmithing.
I think it's, I think it's an important one to change, honestly, Barb.
Why don't you just email me your wordsmithing? And I know it may be the last one Mr. Colletto has the opportunity to do, but.
And in my opinion, at this point, I would rather educate and motivate people than mandate them for hooking up. So, I just want to put that out there, that if there's any way that we could look more towards, I know we spoke about having an educational program, I think you brought it up, Barb, last time, that we work on an educational program to get people to voluntarily test their water, because it really is important. And I don't think people understand that it's not just the fecal coliform. If you have a well, you should test for other items that could be potentially dangerous in your, in your private water. That's all. Thank you.
Just because it happened in Horsham doesn't mean water doesn't gravitate to Doylestown.
Absolutely. No, I understand the seriousness of, especially PFOS, I understand.
Southern municipalities, yeah, water doesn't care for municipal boundaries, right, Keith?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Sure.
So, is there a motion to advertise? I'm sorry.
I, I'll wait till you're done.
Well, you might want to say something before I call the question here.
No, it's just a congratulatory.
Oh, okay. Is there, well, you go ahead.
Okay. Before the vote, I just would like to thank both Rick and Ken. I've only been here three years, but you both were extremely welcoming. And I think Ryan said it best. I saw Ken at the meetings, the DTMA meetings, for two years. He did not have to go. I think he came out of pure, just interest and looking out for the best interest of both the township and the authority. So, both of you, I worked, and thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Keith. But I think he came there to keep an eye on me, to make sure I was. Just my personal opinion.
Probably right. Okay. Back to this well ordinance. Is there a motion to advertise as, as corrected?
I make a motion. We authorize the proposed well ordinance?
Second.
Okay. Any other considerations? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Up to RLA funding for the swamp at Eastern Road Traffic Signal Modification. This is just requiring, I think, a resolution from the board authorizing me to sign the grant application. Is there a motion to authorize me to sign this application?
It's not, I want to confirm it's not an application.
We've been awarded, it's just a reimbursement agreement.
You need to say that all over again, because I don't.
It's not an application. It is a reimbursement agreement that we're entering into that the board needs to authorize. And it is 100% reimbursable. We have to put out the cash, but we get reimbursed for engineering and construction.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the request, you know, to send some equipment to auction. Mr. Markloff sent us a memo, and is there a motion to send this, what is it, a 2001 International 4,900 Dump Truck with a spreader to auction? It's 54,000 miles on it, if anybody's interested. Motion to send it to auction.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, what's next? The 457 plan.
Engelberg Financial Advisors Agreement.
Does anybody have any problem with that? I don't think we have to pass on that, do we?
You have to approve it, because even though the township's not participating in funding, it's an option for employees, but you still have to approve making it available.
Okay. And you reviewed this, Mr.?
I did. As well as the next one.
You okay with it?
I'm, I'm okay with it if you're an intelligent investor.
Okay. All right. Let's do this one at a time. The 457 Engelberg Financial Advisors, I guess this gentleman's leaving, going somewhere else, and we're approving that.
Yes, it's open in his own firm.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, the 457 plans, the employees want to contribute more if that's, they want to contribute more, if that's what they want to do. Is there a motion to approve this change or amendment to their plan?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, we have a zoning hearing board application for 95 Wilkes-Barre requesting ovarian's to build a house. Your thoughts, Ms. Zoning Person?
I would recommend we leave this to the zoning hearing board.
So be it.
Cut and dry.
Okay. All right. And the treasurer's report for December 17th, 2019. You've had an opportunity to review it online, everybody?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, the bills list for December 17th, 2019.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's your last two votes, you guys. Oh, that's a, give me another reservation, please. Lot of stuff here.
What, the station wagon?
So, I told Ken I was going to say this to start in my household as of late, because the Eagles are so sporadic anymore. They started wagering. So, I learned the phrase "over and under," and I know what it means, even though maybe I've heard it for many years. But, so, there's a, I'm going to ask you to wager at this point how many minutes it will be before I cry. Over or under five or three? Well, I'm, I've, for both of these men, I've been a supervisor for 17 years and chair for the last, I don't know however many. And I've never worked with two finer people. Walt Berry was, late, great Walt Berry was right up there. But these two men, I've known Rick Colletto since the days of Oktoberfest. We met actually on the fields. He's been a diehard volunteer the whole, I mean, 20, 25 years I've known him. And we've worked, we've done some wonderful things together. And over the years, I've met dear sweet Marie and a lot of his family. All of, I see a lot of them here tonight. So, they became part of my family, I part of theirs, and they're always will be part of the Doylestown Township family. Well, you don't, you may not remember this about Rick Colletto. I do. I think it's amazing thing to tell, and it's testament to his character and his dedication that when he became a member of the Planning Commission, he went to like 1,700 Planning Commission school meetings. I mean, I mean, he learned how to be a Planning Commission member by going to school. And he went, I'm, I'm saying 1,700. I know I'm exaggerating. But he went, I don't know, seven, 10, 15 Mondays in a row to learn how to be the best member of the Planning Commission. And that's the type of man Rick Colletto was, and he continued to be that throughout, you know. He, he, he kept me from getting, taking myself too seriously for many years. And the last couple of years, I've worked to keep him from taking himself so seriously. And I can't tell you enough how much I've appreciated knowing you and working with you and thanking you for your multitude of contributions to your family, your people of the township, and to me personally, and to the administration here and this board. So, I can't tell you, I'm going to, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to read your resolution after I talk about Ken for a second. Ken, you said everything I wanted to say about you already, so he, he is by far the hardest working person, one of the hardest working persons I've ever met. And what they say about him showing up at meetings he didn't have to go to is true. He knew about everything, he knew everything going on in any meeting at any particular time. And while he says, you know, he's, he's a data-driven guy, and he was referring to me as being the intuition one, well, I say to you, data is just a process based in intuition. That's all. It's all it is. I paraphrase, I paraphrase a phrase that goes, "An algorithm is just an opinion based in math," which is what, it's what we're talking about, the same thing. So, Ken is by far a stellar member of this board and this family of Doylestown Township, and always will be. His mark is everywhere. It's in this building. It's in the sewers. It's in the wells. It's in the water. It's in the roads and bridges. It's in all of our hearts. And this building is, it has your name on it forever. And I can't tell you what a privilege and honor it has been to, to work with you and get to know you and your lovely wife, Cecile. And I know we've become friends. You don't, you don't spend this kind of time in, in working at something without becoming close to people, because you're in the trenches, and you are arguing, and you are being annoying to each other. But to his credit, he, he never acted annoyed by me, but I was always annoyed by him initially. I was the one who wanted to get to the point, but we couldn't get to the point because Ken wanted to do the data thing again and again. But interestingly, we still got to the point after the data, the first point I said, the first opinion I had, was still the same opinion after all the data examination. So, there you have it. But, but he taught me a lot about patience and investigating options and allowing for other opinions and, and being, keeping, keeping, you know, the ego out of things. He's very gracious. Both of these men are gracious. And I'm going to miss you personally, I'm going to miss you guys, but I know Doylestown Township is going to miss you, and I hope you don't go far. I know you're still township resident. I know you're still township resident. So, don't go far. We're going to find you. We have resolutions from the Senate of Pennsylvania, and we have resolutions from the House of Representatives for each of you. And I'm not going to read them. I'm just going to read the ones that we're going to give you, if that's okay. For Richard Colletto, because you're older, we're going to start with you. I think you're older. I don't know. Ken is like this ageless kind of face. I have no idea how old anybody is. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors, Township of Doylestown County of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Mr. Richard F. Colletto for his nine years of service to the Board of Supervisors, whereas Mr. Colletto has been a resident of Doylestown Township for the past 34 years, and whereas Mr. Colletto was appointed to serve as co-chairman of the Oktoberfest Committee in the late 1990s, and served on the township's Planning Commission from 2002 to 2010, where he was chairman from 2006 to 2010, whereas Mr. Colletto was appointed to fill an unexpired term for supervisor in March of 2010, and whereas he was duly elected as Doylestown Township Supervisor in November of 2011, and reelected in 2013, and served as vice chairman of the board from 2014 to 2019. Whereas during his service, Mr. Colletto has been the Board of Supervisors liaison to the municipal authority, the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and the Planning Commission. And whereas, Mr. Colletto achieved many accomplishments along with his fellow supervisors during his service to the community as a supervisor. Mr. Colletto saw the addition of bike hike trails, the installation of play equipment at Kids Castle, the planting of hundreds of trees, the installation of the Century Trail in Central Park, the beginning of the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Project, the installation of public water in cross keys and furlong areas, the opening of the 202 Parkway, the celebration of the township's bicentennial, and most importantly, the building of a new Doylestown Township Municipal Complex. And whereas, Mr. Colletto has diligently served the Board of Supervisors and the Doylestown Township community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Doylestown that Richard F. Colletto be recognized for his nine years of service and dedication to the community as a member of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. Signed by me today. Okay. Now, Ken, and we'll, you can just, I'll bring you all these things over. There's also a beautiful plaque that is for you. Why don't you, why don't you come up and do this? Because I know Stephanie likes a photo opportunity here. Please? So, I can read this plaque to you. There's really no format for saying goodbye to friends.
It's not goodbye.
Well, I don't like change. Presented to Richard F. Colletto, the 17th of December 2019 by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for his nine years and then 10 months of service and dedication to the Board of Supervisors and the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, likewise, Ken, you have a resolution here from the Senate and the House of Representatives. And, oh, you also have a PSAT's resolution, Rick, and so do you, Ken. That's the wrong one. Okay. I got too many things up here. Stephanie?
Yes.
What's your phone?
Your fallout.
Hang on. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors, Township of Doylestown County of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Mr. Ken Snyder for his six years of service on the Board of Supervisors, whereas Mr. Snyder was duly elected as Township Supervisor in November 2013, taking office in January 2014, and he served as vice chairman of the board as of June 4th, 2019. Whereas during his service, Mr. Snyder has been the Board of Supervisors liaison to the Township's Environmental Advisory Committee, the Central Buck Senior Task Force, the Traffic Advisory Board, the Telecommunications Advisory Board, the Pension Advisory Committee, and the Ways and Means Committee. And whereas, Mr. Snyder was an active member of the Township's Building Committee, chairing and overseeing all phases of the new municipal complex building project. And whereas, during his tenure, Mr. Snyder saw the addition of bike and hike trails, the installation of play equipment at Kids Castle, the planting of hundreds of trees, the installation of the Century Trail in Central Park, the beginning of the Pebble Ridge Woodridge Sewer Project, the installation of public water in the furlong areas, the celebration of the township's bicentennial, and most importantly, the building of the new township municipal complex. Mr. Snyder, along with his fellow supervisors, achieved these accomplishments during his tenure in the community and for the community. Whereas, Mr. Snyder has diligently served the Board of Supervisors and the Township of Doylestown. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of Supervisors of the Township of Doylestown that Ken Snyder be recognized for his six years of service and dedication to the community as a member of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. Signed by me today. I'm sorry, Ken. Sorry, everybody, for crying. But you two guys are just like the best. Come on up and get your plaque, please. Come on up and get your plaque, please. It says, it says presents to Ken Snyder. Do you have a middle name? I always wanted to know about that.
Yes, I do.
The seventeenth day of December 2019 by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for his six years of service and dedication to the Board of Supervisors and the community. Gentlemen, this, these plaques do not at all really tell the story of your service, but it's the best we can do, so thank you.
Thank you.
And all, let's eat cake. There is some cake here for, um, for the celebration. I think we're adjourned. Yes, board? We're adjourned to cake. Thank you, everybody, for coming. This is an important night for these men, and it's an important night for us, and we love to see you come and participate in this.